Yeah, I'm fine.
Alright, so we're gonna start. How do you want to go? Great, we're good? Alright, so welcome to tonight, Monday, November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, to the regular business meeting of the Board of Education. Please rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you all for joining us, those that are here live and those that are watching us stream. It's always an exciting night when we have students right in front of us and we get to see what they're all about, so we appreciate that. Before we begin, just remind everyone that there is two exits at the rear of the auditorium, as well as exits at each side of the stage. I'll just quote quickly across the dais, all the way to my left, we have trustee Tazneen Megji, then we have trustee Len Hirsch, we have trustee David Keef, we have board vice president Bob Ballerino, I'm board president Mark Hamburg, to my right is Dr. Lain Canis, our superintendent of schools, then we have Dr. Danielle Gately, our deputy superintendent of schools, we have Ms. Diana Kostangway, our assistant superintendent for business, John Sheen is the district council, and Adrian Cummings is the district clerk who's standing at the podium. So with that, I am going to turn it... Actually, I have a student, a student representative here tonight? Yep, great, come on up. It's a good thing you waved, I can't even see you back there.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So, we're beginning to wrap up our first quarter of the year, which is great, and I think everyone's settling into the new year well. We just ended our fall sports season with the girls soccer team, as well as the girls and boys cross-country team going to their respective state championships, so those seasons ended well. Our winter sports are also starting with fencing, basketball, winter track, and bowling, so that's great. And we've had some lovely sales going on recently for, like, EAC Club, for TriM, and we've had some more student activity going on, and we're preparing for our ICU Day, so luckily that's happening again this year, so we've all been working for that, and we're with the student government and student senate, we're working towards helping with funds for Haiti and causes towards that. So it's a great start to the year so far, and we're looking forward to great things happening. So yeah, that's it.
Fantastic.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, before I turn to superintendent's report, I just want to mention to the public, there's an agenda item that I'm going to pull, and there's a replacement item that we're going to walk on for that agenda item. It's item number three point one six. I'm pulling the entire agenda item, and if anyone wants to see it and has any questions on it, it's over on the piano. Copies of the walk-on are available. So with that, I'll turn to superintendent.
Okay, and I'd like to begin by telling the board that you've received a letter, which we will be posting on the board website, from Governor Hokel. And Governor Hokel has written to recognize school boards across New York State and our school board. She didn't quite make it for School Board Recognition Week, but she really wanted to take the opportunity to thank school boards across the state and our school board for all the hard work that they do, so that recognition was shared by our governor. So thank you again for all you do.
Thank you for sharing that. Thank you. And then you have another one?
And I have something very special. We have with us today a student presentation, and our robotics team, the ninth to twelfth graders, Pat Hurley, their advisor, will be telling you about it, but they earned first place this recently in the Half Hollow Hills Robotics Invitational, and they did just great. And I just want to take a moment to just really, you know, recognize the efforts of Mr. Hurley and the robotics team and the STEM, you know, and the STEM initiative from the district, and Mr. Chemnitzer, and everybody involved, all of our STEM teachers. STEM was really a strategic plan priority in our original strategic plan, and remained one in our second one, and I think the robotics team is a great example of, you know, all the work that everybody has done, you know, to try to meet the district's needs and the community's needs for STEM. So, I won't say anymore, but Pat, Mr. Hurley, come on up.
And everything Dr. Canis said is right, but we really want to see what that thing on the stage does.
Oh, okay. It does good things.
Does it matter?
Yeah, that'd be... So first and foremost, thank you, thank you for having us today, or tonight. We really appreciate showcasing what our program has turned into since I've come on and helped the team. You know, this is just a small sample size of how many students are actually involved in this program. We have about thirty, thirty-five students right now that are eager to learn about robotics. You know, we have, it's multiple levels of learning. You have young members and you have senior members, which you're, you're sitting in front of right now. This is Team Two A Seven Two. We are a first robotics team in the New York region. We compete on Long Island. There's multiple regions in New York that compete to go to the World's Games, and we took first place in our first robotics tournament in two years. So the robot that you see right here is a pre-pandemic robot. We were building that robot just when COVID was a thing. And unfortunately, the last two years, we were shut down, so this was the first time that we were able to showcase our skills and, and what this robot can do. So it was a great win for our program. It's also a great win for the community, and also the alumni that are now often mechanical engineering and coding, you know, pursuing coding, mechanical engineering, all different kinds of STEM career paths in college. So, as much as it is for this, these young men and women that aren't here right now, it's also, you know, for the alumni that are now on and, and doing big things. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce Sean Killian and Matt Temkin. They're gonna come up and, you know, lead you through the, the experience.
As Hurley introduced, I'm Sean Killian. I'm the code captain of the Wheatly Cybercats, and I essentially write the software for it to move around. I learned that software in the PLTW classes for Computer Essentials, and then I moved on to Java A, which is our AP coding class here, and I was able to learn Java, the basics there, and then apply them to the robot, and then I learned library usage with the robot. And then, here's Matt.
Hi, I'm Matt Temkin. I've currently been doing robotics for around eight years, everywhere from two years junior FLL to now in first robotics competition here and first tech challenge over in Queens. I'm the build captain here on the Wheatly Cybercats. I handle everything from physical fabrication of the robot to helping the computer aided design team figure out how the robot's gonna look like before we build it. That way, we don't waste any resources or materials that don't have to be wasted.
I want to quickly just introduce, first is a program designed to help the STEM Initiative, which is something that a lot of schools are pushing for now. It helps introduce kids to STEM ideas through the art of sports. Everyone loves a baseball game, everyone loves a football game. They take that, they try to make it into something that people can watch, the spectators support, and then you just have people build robots that compete in them instead of people. So, oh, sorry. So, what you're about to watch is what they release to the world every year.
Welcome to the 2020 First Robot.
So, this is an animation around January second to fourth, that they will give this to the world, China, India, England, America, Brazil. Everybody's waiting to see this video, and this is gonna give us the ideas that we need to pursue a design and a strategy for the next build season. So this was two thousand nineteen's video, and that's the bot that you're looking at right there. This is the video that we saw, and then we designed our bot for that video.
Name every three times. An incoming asteroid shower is eight in Perfect City. Using Alliance Droids, planetary citizens collect and store power cells while traversing the trench run and boundaries to ensure maximum protection with an operational shield generator. Droids start from an initiation line and may be preloaded with up to three power cells. Droids operate autonomously during the first fifteen seconds in an attempt to store power cells into any of their three available power ports. While every power cell's accustomed and equal charged to the shield generator, higher power ports earn more points. Traders then control their droids for two minutes and fifteen seconds of tally operated time. Power cells are collected from one of the five chutes in the lulling bay and then driven across the city to be stored in a low, outer, and inner port. Droids must store the required number of power cells to activate sections of their shield generator, and then either rotate their control panel a specified number of times, or position it to a specific public. Near the end of the match, droids race to their rendezvous point to make their shield generator operational. Alliances are awarded bonus points for a level generated switch. The alliance that earns the most points wins the match. Play the phones. Hit the song.
So, immediately after we watched this video, which was in January, we got straight to work on prototyping and designing the mechanisms that we would use. We don't get a guide, we don't get a Lego set, you know, you have to make everything yourself. So, Hurley helps us with the fabrication, figuring out the ideas, but it is mainly student-led designs that are on, you know, that end up on the last robot. So this is us testing a prototype shooter to shoot into that high goal. There's me, there's Matt, there's our alumni, James Torini and Daniel O'Keehee, and then there's Ainsley, who is also one of our captains. She couldn't make it tonight, unfortunately. So, this would be the start of the longest season in team history. There was two reasons for that. Recently, first, they changed the rules. Originally, you would only have six weeks to build this robot, but they realized that teams who were, you know, smaller, resourced, or had smaller teams of six, maybe, wouldn't be able to field a robot in six weeks. So, they dropped that, they said you can build until the competition, and then you just show up with that robot and play. But, the bigger reason that we had a longer season was, of course, COVID. So, pre-COVID, we had a very new team. Our team had gone through a lot of changes. A lot of the members were seniors, so we had a lot of new members stepping in. We had a new programming captain, which would be me. We had a new driver, which would be Matt. We had a new mechanical captain, which would be James Torini. And then, we also had a new design philosophy. When we had gone for more complicated designs in the past, such as giant scissor lifts and very, very complex mechanisms, we could build them and we could CAD them, but they weren't the most effective. We went for a, let's design a simple thing that works, which is the engineering mindset of a lot of people. And, you know, we work with engineers from ORIX, which is a food robot industry makers, and they, they come here, and so, you know, we talked to them, and they were like, one of our biggest philosophies is keep it simple. So, we took a step back, we said, alright, let's keep this year's robot simple. So we went for a low-goal shooter who would be fast and be able to climb. So, the pandemic struck us, and we had, you know, like everyone, a hard time adapting. We took a break, obviously. People needed to be with their families. I personally, my family works in healthcare, so big struggle there. So, you know, a lot of us took a break. But when we came back, it was the beginning of the two thousand twenty school year, and, you know, we had to figure out, how do we continue this club? Because it's a great club, I love this club. I would hate to see anything happen to it. So, we figured out, how can we switch something that is so hands-on as building a robot into an online curriculum or an online club? There was no competition this year besides a at-home competition, which would use the same robot, but a few driving challenges. You'd have to drive in a certain pattern, or you'd have to program the robot to drive in a certain pattern. And then, we'd also be setting up online meetings, which I'm sure have been fun for everybody that has to have to set up online meetings. And we also had to say to ourselves, how do we build parts? You know, we can't all meet and cut metal and, you know, have Hurley teach us to use the tools in such a small place with masks, when the school was, you know, struggling to stay open regularly, right? And we can't meet after school, so we said, alright, let's, you know, take it upon ourselves, figure out, how do we do this virtually? So, what we did is, we created lesson plans. These are three of our biggest subdivisions. They are coding and electrical, which I have, mechanical and CAD, which Matt heads along with Winston and Julian, who are sitting up. You guys can come up. So, these two are CAD heads. You guys can come. These two basically handle the computer aided design part of the design, which is a lot of what our online work was, you know? We couldn't design a robot by hand, but we could simulate it, and we could simulate parts, and they'll talk about more so how we could simulate, you know, things like that. So you guys can sort of just say what you did on the CAD team and, you know, how you worked during COVID.
So, for the two thousand twenty year, which is right before the quarantine, we were working on, like, new, like, a new robot, like, new designs, like, a new chassis for our robotics team, and actually, for this new year for robotics team, we've been recently teaching a lot of the newer members, some of, like, design, like, bringing them up to skills that we would need for robotics team, things like that. Since there's such a big gap, a lot of the seniors had graduated, there would be, like, a gap in knowledge for a lot of the members of robotics team.
Yeah, adding on to what Winston just said, basically, for the two thousand twenty season, we built a chassis that we're actually gonna be implementing for this year's competition. And, yeah, we've been teaching the new members, we had, like, although it's a small team, but then, like, it's easier to manage, so we were able to teach them, like, the basis of CADing, of, like, creating three D models on the, on the computer, and, yeah.
Great, thank you, guys. And the CAD knowledge that they got, the basis, which they based all, all of it, is from your PLTW class of GDP, Drawing Design Production. They teach us AutoCAD there, and then we just take those fundamentals and basics and we improve on them, right? So this is really how people can expand more if they want to learn more in CAD. So, yeah, we also restructured our work schedule. We would have people meet for a smaller amount of time, and we'd have meetings in places other than the school, right? And just sort of, small meetings with two or three people, you know, with COVID safety regulations in mind, and just sort of working like that. So we had to work smarter, but we also did work harder. We had to, you know, figure out where we could get parts, because ORIX was not gonna help us, because they were going through a tough time, because every business was going through a tough time. Each of these is a PowerPoint we created. Coding and Electrical's PowerPoint is about sixty-three, and they all have very similar formats, so it's very curriculum-based, and it's very, I would like to say that the people who made them did a very good job. Okay, so, this year was obviously the change. We went from, you know, being online and having online meetings to having actual meetings again, and we were going to be preparing for our first competition, which was the Half Hollow Hills Invitational. This would be the first time the robot has ever competed with bumpers and a metal intake, and so we had to do a few things. We also sort of stepped back, and when we're teaching kids, and we were teaching with the online format, we realized, people learn a lot from this. There's a lot to be gained, and, you know, we wanted more people to be in touch with this. I know personally, I was touched by robotics when I was super young. I did Lego robotics when I was probably eight years old, and then I've been doing it ever since. So I know that kids have this interest, and they love seeing the robots like this. So, for day of service, we decided, we're gonna go to Willets, we're gonna give a demonstration, because I'm sure people would love to see this. I love seeing this thing, and when I came here in ninth grade, Hurley showed me one of the robots, which was huge, and I was encapsulated ever since. And, so we just, you know, we wanted to show that to the younger kids, get them interested, and it really did work. We got a lot of those kids interested. I have a few pictures from there, so that will be at the end of the presentation. So quickly, the Half Hollow Hills Invitational. It is the first competition in two years. The only member who's had drive team experience was me at that point. I was drive coach back in, when I was a freshman, twenty eighteen to nineteen, so that was a while ago. And we only had four members with competition experience, which was Matt, me, Jaden, and JaPesh. Oh no, we had five, we had Ainsley as well. And then, we had low membership the day of the competition, because it happened to conflict with the November SAT, which was nobody's fault, but, you know, we only had eight members who came. So, but, we did have the robot that we worked on for two years, super hard, and we've iterated on its design, and we made it lighter, and we made it quicker than it ever was, so. It's playing the game that you guys saw at first, and this is, this is the finals match. This is where we found out, we won the whole Invitational, and we beat out teams like Miniola, Bethpage, and, you know, we were, we had made a good robot, which was really an exciting moment for everyone on the team. I know. So, the score of that match was one hundred and seventy-four to ninety-four, with us in favor. That was probably, I was super proud of the team, Hurley was super proud of the team, I think everyone was super excited. You know, it was the first time we competed in two years, and we came to win something that we'd always been so close to winning, but just never there. And this year, we were. So, that was super exciting for us, and, you know, there's the score, there's all of us after, we're all really excited, you can see Winston there, he's probably in his fist. And, you know, while we did win as this team with only eight members, it was so many more people, so, so many people have added on to this robot. Our alumni that have worked on the intake, the drivetrain, the chassis, all of them have contributed so much, and, you know, it'd be a lie to say that it's not also theirs. This robot has been with us through many years, and I'd like to say that I've grown very fond of it, and it's, you know, even though it's given, it's given me some trouble, and it's given Matt some trouble, but it's, it's been a winner for us. So, we hope to keep this going with our new robot, which we will have to design this year to a completely different game, and that's, that's gonna be an experience that I think we're up to the task for. And now, so, the plans for the future of this club, with that whole educational, going to day of service, it helped me realize something, and it helped the club realize something that, you know, this program of first is so much more than just, you know, competing. It's about the learning experience, it's about the connections I formed. I mean, I think when I came here, I was, I was completely new, moved here in ninth grade, and I found a family within this club, and I wanted to be able to open that up to more people. So, what I hope to do is, I hope, we hope to establish as a team, an FLL junior team, which is essentially a Lego version of robotics. It's non-competition-based, it is presentation-based, and helps kids that are very young, K through four, you know, get introduced to STEM in this sort of exciting way of, they could make a robot, but they could also make whatever they want out of Legos. So, that's that. Four, four through eight is where we have our first competitions, our first Lego League. Now, you got, Willets and Northside both have Lego League teams, so that has already been implemented. But one of the biggest things I want to implement is the first tech challenge. The first tech challenge is really the intermediary between the first robotics challenge and the first Lego League. Right now, we have kids who come up from Willets having Lego experience to automatically being, fabricating huge three-by-three panels, right? And while that is not completely, you know, unrealistic, I did it, Matt did it, it'd be a lot easier if they went to the first tech challenge first, which is a lot more fabricating parts, they're smaller robots than what we make, but the team's budget is also smaller than ours, and it creates this new opportunity of, you create programming codes in Python, most of the robots is coded in Python, and/or Java, but it creates this opportunity for younger kids to get a head start, right? Whereas, they would be coming in with block coding, which is something that, honestly, I think a lot of the kids in Willetts showed so much interest that they could field a FTC team, and they could field a really good one, too. So, next, we're gonna go to the day of service. Oh, this is quickly, just some stats about it. So, FTC has ninety-three percent of the members end up creating a part of the robot, ninety-two percent help build it, and, you know, I like the hundred percent teamwork one, because it does create a very strong sense of teamwork. And, you know, there's eighty-seven percent increased interest in doing well, because the better you are at math, the better you can do the calculations to, you know, get the right parts. And so, quickly, for day of service, what we did is we traveled to Willetts.
Okay, so, I'm gonna take over for the next couple of slides. We went to Willetts Road for day of service this year. It is a new event that we just, this year, planned on doing, and it was a really great experience. It not only gave us the ability to give kids an insight as to what their future could be in robotics, but it also gave, it gave us an experience of seeing how we get to where we are as being kids from a more, you know, third-person perspective. And it was a really great day. We drove the robot around for the kids, we taught them about all the different aspects of robotics, and how you can really express yourself, not only in building the robot, but encoding the robot, and being a part of our business part of robotics.
Which helps with the graphic design, as you can see, vision R2D2 had on the robot.
Graphic design, merchandise design, team collating between different teams in Long Island, or New York even. And it was a very great way to see how kids were interested in robotics, because usually in FRC, it's a very busy build year, you know? We are very droned in on making the robot and getting it ready for competition, safety, you know, tensile strength, will it hold together if we, you know, like you saw in the video, rammed it at fifteen miles an hour against the wall? And here, we really got to take a step back, and we got to see how we can engage our community in different types of events. So, yeah, that was a very good event for us. And so, here are some pictures of us at that event. Here's Sean giving a really great code presentation to the kids. It was another great experience to learn how, to teach kids, not only in language, how to talk to them and use different words, how to present and use body language, and project your voice, and really be confident about what you're saying, because not a lot of people realize, but robotics is also a lot about confidence. You know, whenever you're driving the robot, you have to be very confident in what you're doing, you have to cooperate with teams really well, and it's a lot of social skills as well, of being able to, really be able to coordinate with other people. And so, here's one of our newer members, John Cornacchia. He's currently giving a design presentation on the robot, and how he has currently been learning more about design and computer, computer aided fabrication, or CAD, and how he's been... and how he's been recently learning AutoCAD a lot more, both from me and Hurley. And I think that's the conclusion to our presentation.
Any questions or anything that you guys have, that you guys may want to ask? And just, yeah, we, when we went to Willets, we really got a pulse of like, this community has a great STEM initiative and a great, you know, STEM foundation for these kids. They need somewhere to outlet it. And I think that robotics is the perfect way to outlet it. So any questions that you guys have, open them up to me. They can be to any members. We have business members here, CAD members here. So pretty much all aspects of the team are here and you can just ask what.
First of all, thank you. Great job, really. I mean, amazing.
Thank you guys for having us.
Hear the details. Appreciate you giving a shout out to your entire team because obviously everyone couldn't be here. But we know, we've seen these presentations before, that it involves a lot of work. Some people on the front scene, some people on the behind scene, but at the end of the day, it's everybody involved in it. So thank you. And also thank you for acknowledging the coursework that got you there. We appreciate you giving a shout out to the various courses that got you extra engaged in wanting to do this. So really, I don't have any particular questions, but it's really fun to watch this. I didn't go to this year's competition, but I went to one. The last one I went to was probably four years ago. I think it was at Hofstra maybe or.
Yeah, we're going to be competing at Hofstra this year again. We're doing a full week this time, S B P L I one and two. So that's going to be March, the week of March 21st. So that entire week, we're going to be competing. And we do have a little bit of information on this year's game. This year's game is going to be called Rapid React.
Just a lot of fun to see. And I don't even know how the competition kept up, quite frankly, the way the robot was picking up those balls and jamming them into the front and center holes. So really, congratulations to everybody. It was really a job well done. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Ken, I'd like to say, my son used to be on the team before. And so I've watched the progression of robotics over the years. And kudos to you all. I'm so impressed because I know so many times you were so close to winning, but you didn't quite make it. So to finally have a win is just, I'm just delighted with it. I'm really, really happy because I've been watching the progression for so many years. And I can't wait to go home and message my son and tell him, they finally won. He's going to be so happy.
I was going to say, I bet he knows for sure.
Yeah, I know. It's very exciting to see, you know, how hard you worked and how, the steps it took together. Because it was, it was a lot of work over many years of, you know, experience, learning how to do competitions, learning how to, you know, recover from losses, all that kind of stuff. And fundraising, I know, was a big problem too. So it's really amazing that you figured so much of it out and won.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. And that concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you again so much.
All right. So with that, we are going to school board, school board report. We don't have any items on the agenda this evening, so I'll move straight into open time. Is there anyone that has any questions from the board? Thank you again, Mr. Hurley. Anyone, Adrian? No, thank you. So seeing no questions, the district clerk, I'm going to move straight into the information items. We have a first read tonight on 2120.1 and 2120.4. 20.20.4 is a read to rescind. That's the existing policy as it is. So consider that read rescinded and first read, policy 2120.1. Any comments from the board?
Yes, I would like, if we could, Mr. Sheen, to incorporate some of the good language from 2120.4 into the new 2120.1. The channels of communication especially, because when we wrote, when the policy was written way back when, email was not a major source of communication in the district. And now it is. So channel of communication has to be included in some of the language with regards to pamphlets and dispersing of information. And I also would like to make sure that we include the language about the polling places, the 100 feet, and banners and pamphlets and things of that nature, and also on the day of election and the day before election language is also incorporated into, into the full policy.
Thank you, Mr. Bellarino. Any other comments from the board? I believe that encapsulates the discussions. Okay, so Mr. Sheen, if we could prepare those comments and then we'll post it as part of a second read, that'd be great. Are there any questions from the public on the first read on 2120.1, 2120.4? Seeing no questions, that closes the first read. Thank you. I'm going to move into the action items. I'm going to group actions. I'm going to group items 3.1 to 3.4. May I have a second? Bellarino, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? I show a hands, 5-0. Thank you. Going to take items 3.5 to 3.6 together. May I have a second? Bellarino, discussion on just, I just want to thank on 3.6, the volunteer coach, Anthony Sparaccia, who already volunteers a ton of time for this community as the East Wilston Little League president. And now I see he's giving even more time back to this community by volunteering for this coaching position. So I just want to give a shout out to him and thank him for giving back to the community. Any other discussion on 3.5 to 3.6? Seeing no further discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. I'm going to take 3.7 by itself. May I have a second? Keith, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Thank you. I am going to take items 3.8 to 3.14. 3.8 to 3.14. May I have a second? Bellarino, discussion. I just want to, on item number 3.13, I want to again thank Roslin, who are participating and sharing in this program with us so that once again, we're able to work very hard to provide opportunities for all students. So thank you for that. Any other discussion on 3.8 to 3.14? Seeing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. I'm going to take items 3.15 and 3.1, excuse me, just 3.15 by itself. 3.15 by itself. May I have a second? Mr. Bellarino, discussion.
Ms. Stanway, can we just, this is all this year's COVID-related expenses?
Yes.
And so this is about the COVID money?
From the end of 1920.
COVID money.
Correct.
And we're using it for the supplies and things of that nature. Okay, thank you.
All right. So this was part of the 2.6 that the board decided to hold in the unreserved designated fund. This is more continuing to be able to spend it. Any other discussion on the 3.15? Seeing no more discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Thank you. So as I mentioned earlier, I'm going to pull, remove, pull item number 3.16 as it was posted. Adrian, I'm just going to ask to make sure that the minutes note that accordingly, that it was pulled as posted. And I'm locking on item number 3.16A in its place, which is a correction on the dollar amounts. I'm going to ask for a second. Mr. Hirsch, discussion. Ms. Kastangway, if you can just confirm, this is once again what this Board of Education asked Central Office to do a number of years ago to firm up these teacher codes in the beginning of the school year, opposed to the end. Could you please clarify for the public?
Yes, that's correct. So from the time, God bless, from the time we prepare the budget in March to the time when we settle into the new school year, there's staff that move lanes, that receive longevity, that haven't received it in the past, that move possibly positions. So this is the final represent, this takes into account the final representation of where all the staff is and puts them in the proper budget codes for the proper amounts.
We appreciate you doing that and continuing to do that because the board felt very strongly wanted to true up those budget code numbers as early in the year as opposed to the end of the year. So thank you for that. Any other discussion on 3.16A? Seeing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Thank you. 3.17 by itself. May I have a second? Mr. Hirsch, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Thank you. I'm going to group items 3.18 to, and 3, 3.18 to 3.20 together. May I have a second? Ms. Megji, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. I'm going to take item 4.1 by itself. May I have a second? Ms. Megji, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Thank you. I am going to take item number 5.1 by itself. May I have a second? Mr. Keith, discussion. Certainly would not let Ms. Kachiki, Nurse Kachiki, leave this district without a big shout out and a thank you. All our staff do such wonderful things for our children. But, you know, our nurses certainly work equally as hard, maybe a little bit more during COVID and all the extras that came through those doors. So we want to thank Ms. Kachiki for sticking through us in really what was the early part of the COVID. Certainly hasn't gone away, but we appreciate all that she did during her 23 years of service with the East Wilston School District. So we thank her for that. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? 5-0. We wish you the best. Thank you. I'm going to group. I'm going to group items 5.2 to 5.6 together. May I have a second? Mr. Keith, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. Take 6.1 by, 6.1 by itself. May I have a second? Ms. Megji, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Thank you. I am going to take 7.1 by itself. May I have a second? Mr. Keith, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Thank you. I'm going to take 8.1 by itself. May I have a second? Mr. Keith, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Megji, item passes 5-0. Thank you. I'm going to group items 9.1 to 9.6 together. May I have a second? Bellarino, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you very much. That brings us to second open time. Would anyone like to approach the board? School Liam?
Yes, good evening. I have a curriculum question, if I may. So this past election, education was a pretty big deal in this past election. And among the points within, within education was critical race theory. And I was, and it just got me thinking. Do, do, do we teach critical race theory? And if we do, how do we present it and what age groups? I was just curious what our school district did since it was such a big part of this past election.
Okay. Critical race theory has become a catchall phrase?
Defining it is.
So there, the New York State standards for social studies or any of the curriculum in New York State, there is no critical race theory. Critical race theory was something that was at a, was at a college or a graduate level in elementary, middle school and high schools. There's no curriculum that's critical race theory. So it's a term that's, that's been bandied around. And so it's not taught. The social studies framework is taught in terms of American history. As you know, New York State has an initiative that's called Culturally Responsive Sustaining Framework. And we in the district are looking at it through our committee of parents and teachers and students that look at an affirming environment for all students and all community members who attend and, and how that translates into the curriculum that we share, the environment that we create. But the discussion about critical race theory that's out there in the country is laden and loaded with, with things that aren't really part of curriculum or really part of not necessarily any official curriculum or anything that's taught, you know, in our school district.
Thank you. Any other questions? Nope. Seeing no further questions, I am going to make a motion to adjourn. May I have a second? Keith, discussion. Seeing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? 5-0. Wishing everyone a healthy and safe Thanksgiving break. Enjoy your time. Thank you very much.
Happy holiday, everybody.